Greetings, how you doing?
Theo, how's it going?
All right, all right. And are all things sort of settled on your end?
Oh, no. It's I still still don't have line of sight on what I'm actually gonna get my my cellphone number back and and I literally was going back and forth and changing the the email contact information for one of my credit cards back and forth. I would change it to my email address and then the fraud server change it back to his like six times today till I eventually just called the company and was like, just cancel this card. I can't live like this. This is yeah, this is crazy.
Geez, that's really horrible.
Yeah, it's been it's been it's been not my favorite.
Yeah. Well said.
How are you Ben?
All right. The as I'm telling people, this is my very big crunch time. So so yeah, so.
Why is that?
We have a bunch of documents that for for actually next year's programs that are due Friday. So so that's all for the planning or grant processes. The review has just started. So that's yeah, both are fun, but both take a lot of work. So yeah. Hey, Matt, how you doing?
You guys.
All right. The I should make. Wow, done it. I've made Jim the co-host. I've enabled the closed captioning like I've I've done everything Sherry Dalton needs me to do. Yeah. So Matt, how are things on your end of the spectrum?
Busy as always.
Yeah.
Trying to keep up with stuff. Apiece as many people as you can.
Survey as many properties.
That's an uphill battle, Matt. That's an uphill battle.
It's yeah, I I'm kind of hoping things will slow down a little bit and it's just keeps getting crazier and crazier. So yeah, it's kind of weird. So. Were we? We weren't emailed the agenda, were we? I'm just trying to.
Were you not?
I don't think so. I got on the website and I think I have pulled it up. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Do you want me to Jim? Do you have it?
Not sure. I'm trying to find it right now. I thought I thought I did see it, but maybe I was incorrect. No, I think I got it.
Okay, did you get it? Okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to kick it over to you, Matt?
No, I've I've gone on the website and have it. Did we get the meeting minutes too, or?
No.
No.
No, we didn't get the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. And Susan's on vacation and I'm assuming Aaron's on vacation. And and Bill's on vacation. So we can, you know, we can invade Cuba. I mean, we got we can pull a Teddy Roosevelt.
Is that is Megan supposed to be coming on board, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Well, we have a quorum. Should we start? We think we we can give Megan another minute or two. Hey, perfect. Hi, Megan. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks. How are you?
Terrific, terrific.
Megan.
Hi.
Yeah.
Dealing with crazy dogs, but
yeah.
Good thing I'm on mute a lot. It's been. Yeah, yeah, I adopted a dog about a month ago and now I have two and the new one is getting like very like used to now living here. And so the energy level has like it's exorbitant. So it's so if I have to be on mute for a hot second, it's probably because I'm screaming at the dogs to stop barking. So.
Fantastic.
Is Abby taking the new?
Shockingly well, I thought it was gonna be awful. And I was like, oh, my God, I can't like ruin her last year of her life, but she actually is like Benjamin Button and loving it. And well, I don't know about loving it, but she's she's been enjoying it and like running in the backyard. And I was like, do you even know how to run? You're fourteen and a half. That's been cute. It's been really cute. Thank you for asking.
Well, that that's fantastic. So. If there's at an appropriate moment, welcome to make an appearance. We can. We can call our meeting to order. Because we have a quorum and Bill Spalding is on vacation as are Susan and I I believe in Aaron Kilkend. So it really is just the four of us. The Megan, did you get the agenda? There's some question.
That's a great question.
Yeah, it's very simple.
It is.
The
but I can. It's on the website. I can grab it from there.
Yeah. While you're doing that, we'll take a roll call though. Jim.
Here.
Matt.
Yeah.
And Megan.
Here.
And myself here. We we don't have minutes from the last meeting. We'll get those at our next meeting. So that's our third item is formal receipt and review of the A and R for five fourteen Water Street. Don't know if the surveyor is going to join us or Mr. Doherty. I did get an email from Mr. Doherty. Inquiring about the status. So the we did get an updated plan and the the surveyor has completed the form and provided the other materials. Unfortunately, obviously, I wasn't able to circulate them to y'all. I can share my screen and I can show you the plan. We can we can see where the the corrections were made if you care to.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now. It looks a lot improved from the last time. So that's great.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. So we have a more detailed note explaining what's happening. We have the distance to the next intersecting street. The we have the the square footage of of both lots pre and post identified. So that's good. And then right. And here's this time a little lot for the team. The the setbacks to the locus buildings are established and the the new lot is involved. So I think it's I think it's in good shape. Does anybody have any other comments? Concerns? The with with Bill being away and likely unable to sign it. I don't know when he's coming back. I was wondering what our steps are for for improvements. Can we take a, you know, authorize me to sign it for all of us, or can just the the four of us sign it? Is there a better? And Matt, you're you're muted.
It would be whoever voted to to endorse it. So if someone's not here, then they wouldn't wouldn't necessarily sign it.
Yeah, all right. If all right, well, that's good enough. So can I? Can we entertain a vote to endorse?
All right, I'll make a motion to endorse the lot consolidation plan of five fourteen Water Streets Wakeville, Massachusetts. Prepared by Edward J. Farrell. Dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
No, ready to put dated seven twenty two. All right. All right, all in favor? Megan?
Yes.
All right, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Doherty has asked if if we're all able to sign it as quickly as possible. I don't know what folk schedules are. I I can pick it up tomorrow and I could certainly bring it by everybody over the weekend. If that's possible, or if you're able to get to Town Hall tomorrow, then that'd be fine, too. You can just email me and let me know what you prefer.
All right, we'll we'll need to sign the I believe we all sign the Form A two.
Yeah.
In the plan.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, we have Form A and.
Is the intent to have the the plan? Where the the plan is going to be in your possession, Theo, tomorrow? Is that what I heard?
Um, I I can go to I can go to Town Hall tomorrow and pick it up. So.
Okay, I'm 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 headed off on vacation, starting on Thursday. So while you and I circle offline and we'll connect tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Excellent. All right, very good. So in terms of item four, Bill emailed me an update. And so in terms of street name changing procedures, Betsy Shear, the town clerk said the street naming fee would be eight hundred dollars and Bill got another voicemail from Tom Mullen, Town Council with a voicemail about the procedure. So should be able to incorporate all of that and then we'll be able to fit finish that review. Yeah, so that's where that's at. We can jump to item five.
So Theo, what's what's the next steps on that? Are we is it going to be a public forum before it goes to Town Council or you're gonna send it to Town Council? Let them approve it. And then we have public hearing. How are we proceeding with this?
I thought the process was to have Town Council approve it and then have a public hearing. Am I getting that backwards?
Well, I believe if we have a public hearing and there are any changes that they need to be done on the floor of town meeting. So if there are, you know, if we hear from people and there's overwhelming support for revising this, it would be better to get it done before the text is approved by Town Council. Because I I I believe that's once Town Council approves it to go on the the warrant. Whatever that text is, is what goes on. And that's what we have the public hearing on.
Yeah, I think that's consistent with what had been described previously as well.
All right, so. So that means at next meeting, we'll we'll vote to approve of have a schedule of public hearing, which would then be on the twenty seventh. And then.
It wouldn't be a public hearing because that has to be advertised.
Yeah.
Could hold a public forum, which again, wouldn't have to be publicized. If it's publicized, we've got to put it in the paper and go through the whole procedure. So.
Okay. Does anybody have a a preference one way or the other, like holding a formal public public hearing? I mean, we we talked about that. It's it can be a a big deal. So.
I thought that for I thought that for items that are going to be referred to Town Meeting, they had we had to have a public forum that was advertising the paper in advance of any changes. Is that just not the case? Because this is a a rules and regs change in lieu of, you know, an actual zoning change?
Well, this is actually a new bylaw that we're proposing. So in this case, anyone who was proposing a new bylaw would just put it through to Town Council. And I don't think they have you know, since this is basically be it. It's sort of a citizen's petition, but it is coming through the planning board. They would just accept it as it is or not. And then if they did, that's the text that's going to go forward. So if if the planning board or the sponsors of this want to hear from the public before it's finalized, I think this is the only option we have, or we could have a public hearing. But then again, we've got to advertise it, pay for it and and do all that.
Yeah. Trying to get to my my public hearing notes. And we don't. I mean, we're back to the so I mean, you know, we've been talking about this for a while. It's been in every planning board agenda. At the we we have not gotten any now we have not had any public input or really any public attendance of our meetings. You know, so for me, it's fifty fifty. And I'm I'm open to what what the rest of the board feel if we just want to make it a sort of finalize it from our perspective and send it to the Town Council at the next meeting on September thirteenth for their approval. And then that goes to the one. Okay.
Well, to be fair, we we haven't really invited the public to comment on this.
Yeah.
We actually in the first couple of meetings, we had people had tried to comment on it. And we had said we weren't really taking any comment on it unless everyone could do it. So so either we we formally say we want your the public's input before this is finalized, or we just finalize it, send it forward and then have a public hearing after the fact.
Yeah.
Personally, I would rather give the public an opportunity to comment on a working draft before it's finalized and and sent to Town Council.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have the time before the fall warrant? Is due? I don't know what that date is.
Yeah.
We're like September October.
Yeah, it's it's getting close because it needs to go to Town Council and then it needs to be advertised. So.
So my, I don't know, I'm only guessing here, but I think Town Town Meeting is going to be delayed by the November election. So the so I think that gives us a little extra time. I think we could. So Matt, I do agree with you and it sounds like Jim and Megan. How do y'all feel about having a public meeting, a public hearing? Forums, whatever you call it.
I I think we should have some sort of opportunity for the public to have input. I do not have a strong preference or or thought in terms of public hearing or public forum.
Yeah. It's yeah, Megan.
Yeah, I think we should give the chance for the public to be able to comment on the document. So.
The so I my I agree with you. I think there's kind of a we've got to. We've got to take the expense of advertising it either way since since we haven't had many takers or much, much traffic, as it were. So can we it sounds like we should do we do we need a vote to say we want to schedule a discussion for the thirteenth? September thirteenth?
No, we can just put it on the agenda that we're going to have a public forum and try to you know, advertise it some. Maybe write a letter in the paper or something like that, or somehow post it. I'm I'm looking at the town's calendar of public meetings and it's it's amazing how when you look at September, there's one public meeting on this thing and nothing else for the rest of the year, even though we sort of know when actions are, we know when our meetings are, it's a little frustrating that this isn't populated yet. So
yeah.
I was looking to see when town elections are. I can't even remember.
Primaries is you're at September sixth.
Okay, so that we're not going to miss on that. So that's good.
Yeah.
But I mean, that should be on the on the town calendar.
Okay. So the town war is published four weeks prior to the meeting. And so it's got to be. So we've got to deliver to the town clerk one week prior to that. And presumably, we want it to be voted on by the Town Council prior to that. So. I think I think right, I think I think that means we're having our 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 public forum on the thirteenth and we should write some write a letter to the 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 daily item and and I I think follow up with Aaron and Jen McDonald about making it more more rough. You know, putting things up on our website and all that stuff.
So we should, if if we're pretty satisfied with the the text of it, the proposed text, we should probably post that on our website, too. So people can look at this ahead of time and see if they want to comment on it and just give everyone the opportunity to review it ahead of time. Just so when this does get to town meeting, we don't hear from people saying, I had no idea this was happening. I had no input on it or anything. And when we can say, well, we had a public forum, we had posted, we've been working on this for a while. So
right.
It shouldn't be a shock to anyone.
All right, so I can work with with Bill and Aaron and Jen to get the to get the final text to the website. And looking through our month. Yeah, we can do that certainly within the the first half of next week. A lot, you know, in addition to the agenda. In terms of a letter to the to the item, is that something? Anybody would like to start? This might be in your up your alley, Megan, being.
Yeah, I mean, I can put something together. I haven't done that before, but I'm sure I can figure it out and put something together and I can share that with you, Theo. Figure it out and put something together and I can share that with you, Theo. Take a look at.
Yeah. Certainly circulated to everybody. The. Yeah, or or I mean, maybe start start with with Bill. And. So. Is there anything else that people would want to go in the letter? I get I get a little. I I I loop too many things together, but. There there are other other things coming up for us in terms of the master plan and and some other. Other things, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to mention those.
I advocate to create separate letters to the. To the daily item to identifying those other. Isolated things that we're looking at.
Very good, alright. Cool, alright. Alright, so. Theoretically, I mean, it would be. Yeah, in all, sort of the best, the best answer would be to finish the letter. I think by. Wednesday, the thirty first or Thursday, the first. Is that is that doable?
Absolutely, I could turn the fee on with Bill, it's not a problem. Do you know when he gets back from vacation?
No, I I have a. I have a feeling he's leaving tonight or early tomorrow. I mean, it's not, it's not bad. I mean, I think I think it's. Yeah, so that's. Okay. Anything else? When my name change? Our fifth item is the continued discussion around revising subdivision rules and regulations and. Matt, I really appreciate that. You're. Working through this.
Yeah, so I think everyone got what I did is I have been. Working on revising the. Rules and regs, so I have. A red line version that I'm trying to note all the changes and then a clean copy where. Some things are wholly getting moved, some things are being deleted. So I don't know if you want to go through that real quick to see some of the stuff that I had changed. I'm gonna. I I can't, I don't have a word at home, so I can't do like live edits, so I'm gonna do, I'll mark it up, but. I'm gonna. Yeah, if you want to enable screen sharing. Pull up. What I have and go through it real quick, so you can see what I've done.
Okay. I clicked on multiple people's shared screens simultaneously, so you should be able to.
Alright, can you see that?
Yes.
Alright. So some of the comments we had discussed before, I I believe I've captured.
Yeah.
I've cut down the number of copies we need. I changed it from seventeen to five. I don't think we need a copy of everything and I don't know where the rest of the copies normally would go. And I'm sure. Same like Jim. Understands we do so many copies of things that we know no one ever looks at and. It's quite an expense to putting all these things together, so. If we can cut that down, I I think we're doing a service to to the environment to tell you the truth, so. And trying to control costs a tiny bit, so. So that was one of the changes there. You can see like. Deleted some statements signed, you know, that should be. Be signed by certain people, what what was this? This was a error of closure, not greater than. One in twelve thousand, which is truthfully. You can't do things worse than that nowadays, so it's it's kind of old school, remove that. I've added the list of required waivers should be noted on the plan. Again, I've changed the masculine to more plural where possible. I got rid of computer discs, so this is one thing I. We had sort of talked about this a little bit. But I going through it, I ended up changing this, so. Where says the definitive plan submission shall contain the following information. And it said on each sheet and some of the stuff is not pertaining to each sheet, so. I basically put which sheet, if each sheet should have something or what sheet it should go to. So I don't know if anyone has looked through this, but I think it makes a little bit more sense to direct. Items that need to go where they need to go, so. So if anyone has any. Any comments, you want to mark up on yours and send them back to me, we can, you know, incorporate those, but. This is what I did for for these, again, my formatting's off some. And then I've added this new each sheet, I'll have a register recording box. And that the entire plan set shall be recorded. That happens as it is anyways, but I'm just kind of pointing out right here that that's gonna happen. And then specific information on for the following plans. So. We revised the existing conditions plan. And we eliminated, as we talked about, eliminated the demolition plan. And I've made a new demolition plan for item number for sheet number two. I've added in some information here that we had on the A and R plans for boundary lines and things like that. And the whole purpose of this. Existing conditions plan is to have a nice clean sheet that we can look at. Too many times we've been getting. Existing additions plan that have things pressed out on them and there's new information on top that. Kind of drives me crazy, we want to see what's there. And then move forward with that, so and I think we kind of agreed that this was a better way to go. I've deleted some information on here, you know, species of trees. One thing I did change though, and I didn't really talk to you guys about this, we had trees. And it said over eight inches. To be located, which means you don't need to locate trees eight inches, just trees over eight inches. So I changed that to trees that are six inches or greater. This is standard of usually what happens is you locate. And we do this trees six inches or greater. This gives us a better idea of exactly the stock of trees that are existing on the property. When it comes before us, so. I know conservation has been looking into tree issues, so I want to make sure that this was consistent. So many times everyone comes like, oh, we're just gonna cut all the trees down anyways and. This is always one that most developers try to not do, but. Truthfully, locating the trees on a lot in Wakefield is not that difficult, so. I think they. Should know that upfront. Does anyone have any? Any thoughts or feelings on on that?
I think it makes sense if Concom is gonna make them do it anyway. I mean, it might as well just be consistent across. I mean, you know, it's it's six inches of the special Concom typically uses utilizes.
I don't think it's what they utilize, I know from most of the requests that we get from from people from other towns. Or from basically everything we do, and this is written into our contracts is that if we locate trees or six inches. And greater, so. And the the over eight inches was you'd you'd miss quite a few trees and a lot of lots, so. A six or eight inch tree is is not. A brand new tree, it's been around for years, so. You know, I'm sure there'll be more discussions as we as we go further on this, so.
Yeah, the only thing is that I think it would make a lot of sense to be consistent with whatever the Concom is using, because. Honestly, it should just be that one this set is. You know, this theoretically, this existing condition plan would be the same for us and for the Concom, you'd hope, you know what I mean, just for ease of. Document prep, but you know, I I think that whatever they. I I would think that whatever they want, we would want to make sure that we're at least as stringent as that in terms of, you know. Equal to or smaller than.
Well, I'm not sure, but they may even go even smaller than that because. They may go, sometimes they go with, you know, ornamental trees that are in. That sometimes get missed completely. I know if if. Our crews see an ornamental specimen, dogwood tree or something. We don't discount it because it's too small, obviously someone planted that. And there's a reason you'd want to potentially show it, so.
Gotcha.
And I know Concom actually likes buffer of smaller trees, they want to show that, so. But this may be something we want to discuss with them. Again, not every project we do is gonna. Go through conservation, but a lot of them do. It would be good that at least our plan. Is gonna meet the needs that they want to, so this is something that they can comment on hopefully.
Yeah, I think I think we should, I think we should just flag it to ourselves to have that, be proactive and have that conversation with them, because I think. Just from, you know, thinking of it from the, if you're an applicant perspective. One document satisfying the needs of both boards is probably just gonna make everyone's life easier, you know, as we saw with Stark Ave.
Yeah. Exactly. Alright, so I added in item two demolition plan, let me. What I'm gonna do. Actually, did that pop up on top there? It did, okay. So. You guys can see the clean copy now, correct? So.
Yes.
Demolition plan, I added, this is what has been new demolition plan if needed. Again, it's not always necessary, but I'm sure on almost every site, there'll be something that has to be removed. All the requirements listed in general information. And again, that is now specific per sheet if it's needed or not. Site features from existing additions plan, and then this is where I added the limited work line. That this should, this limit of work line should now show up the same on all the sheets that. That show plan view. Something that hasn't consistently happened. I want to make sure that. We establish this at this point and going forward, if there's a drainage plan. Layout plan, anything, it's the exact same exist, limit of work line that shows up on each one, it doesn't change. It's the same, so.
Hey Matt, I agree with that conceptually, the only question I would have and and I apologize if I missed it. That limited work plan, I would think, because the demo plan is not necessarily gonna be. In every set, I would think that would want to be on the context plan as well. At at a at a minimum, right, and make sure that the context. The the limited work on the demo and the context would be consistent.
Yeah. So so now when we get to the context plan, should I just? I suppose that we should put limit of work line and just repeat this on every plan, do you think that would?
I think every plan we wanted on, I think I think it's just, it's so important in terms of. Clarity for us and for other relevant parties that I think it probably, you know. As much as I hate to say over explain it, but it probably is one of the, one of the things that would make sense to over explain and make sure that we get it. And we specifically noted on each. Plan that we wanted on, right, because I think that we don't necessarily want it on the existing conditions, we'd want it on the demo, we want on the context. You know, we probably would want it on all those other ones too, like drainage and all those other things, I would think.
Alright, so what I'll do is I'll I'll make sure that. This limit of work line. Shows up on every single plan going forward, so if it's if it's necessary.
I would also, I would also add that we should probably add a little like, a little note on there saying that. Limited work plan shall be the same on all submitted plans, just because. Knowing knowing some of the folks that we deal with, we could get a limit to your point. You could have one on for the demo and one for something else, we might want to make it explicit, like the limit of work is the limit of work.
You know, I I'm just thinking of that too. Should we say limited works line shall be a bold line type? Shall be shown on each plan as needed and shall be.
In the in a drawn in a consistent manner or drawn in a consistent location on each planet is included.
Alright, okay, drawn, alright. Again, I was thinking the same thing, I was like, I might overthinking this, but. Since you brought up, perhaps I I wasn't, so. Alright, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna switch, let's see. Back over to here. So. This is a context plan, so now the context plan got changed to item number three. And.
So I did have a question regarding, let's see, section E. Where we're referencing from available GIS data, is that a specific? Database that we're looking to have uploaded, you know what I mean, to like for consistency?
Well. There's a, this is the mass mapper. Site that you can pull information from and use. Other towns have their own GIS system with contours that have been. Gathered, they've been flown and each town has that. Truthfully, I don't know if Wakefield has that or not, so that's why I wanted to put on there. It it could be from. Town supplied information, it could be from, you know, state supplied information, but. I just wanted to put on there, if it is from GIS. You should show that, so, because I've seen some plans where it's all GIS information and they don't disclose that it's not an actual survey. And the GIS information is useful, it's not necessarily accurate, so. Does that answer your question or?
It does, and and based on that, I also definitely agree that the source information should be clearly stated, because. To your point, if they're just using mass mapper, then that would kind of tell us a a certain level of effort or lack thereof.
Yeah.
That would invite additional scrutiny.
Yeah, and and I I work in some towns and and they want actual topography. Two hundred feet from the site, which is. Impossible to get. Permission from people to do that for one and second. It's a huge expense, so unless you're gonna, you know, fly it with a drone or something. It's still an expense that someone has to pay for, so.
It's also still a lot of privacy, if you've got a drone drone above my house. Laying out my lot, I don't know if I would particularly love that if I was on a butter either.
Exactly, so I I just wanted to put that in there, so. And then a lot of this stuff is carryover. Location recorder proposed easements. I I was going back and forth on the location of recorded and proposed easements, because basically. Any proposed easement hasn't really appeared in this plan set yet until you get to the subdivision plan, so. I don't know. If. That should be in here or or just existing easements. But.
I think I think that the minimum, if you're gonna have proposed easements in there, you want to have it in bold or or some some manner to make it distinguishable, right?
Yeah. And and I can see if you do a proposed easement across someone else's lot to tie into drainage or something. You may want to see in a big, big picture how where your drainage line is going to go. It's going across a couple of the person's land. So this would be the place to do it. So um. So do we want to say that uh proposed proposed easements? Noted in old or something?
I think I think so. Proposed even shall be noted as proposed and bolded in order to, you know, for for clarification or some language thereof.
All right. All right, well, that so, all right. So we get to the subdivision plan. I'm going to switch back over to this other one. Uh, so originally that would have been. They originally we called it the property rights and dimensional standards plan. But in the end, it's the subdivision plan. So I I reworded that subdivision plan. So I I don't know if anyone has any. I know I'm probably besides Jim and I were the only ones that really go through this often and and know the terminology pretty well and and deal with it. So um, that's why I changed that. That may come up in discussions. We might change it back. That's I'm fine with that. I just. I think to simplify, simplify it. When people hear subdivision plan, they understand what that is. A property rights and dimensional standards plan doesn't make sense to most people. So exactly. Yeah. That's that's what a subdivision plan does, but that's the name of it. So uh, so that's why I called it subdivision plan. Again, I'll put on uh now on this plan, we wouldn't necessarily need the um limit of work line. You don't necessarily show all the features on here. You um. I'm trying to read this quickly. If I put in uh setback. I I I'm gonna add in any uh walls or fence lines or any anything that uh basically determines boundary lines. So if there's a it's a stone wall and that's where the where the boundary line is between parcels, then it should be shown. So I'm gonna add but that should be in there.
Don't you have that under um section L? It's applicable. Oh, wait. Uh, no, sorry. Section K.
Markers. Uh, proposed bonds, markers or monuments. Um. Yes, but uh we should have something existing. Lines of occ- occupation or walls. Because sometimes, a- and this is where people get a property line mixed up with the boundary line. Your fence could be ten feet on your neighbor's land. You you think that's your property, even though the boundary line is ten feet off. So this is why I'm I'm always a little particular when I say a a property line or a boundary line because they have different meaning, at least to me, not necessarily everyone else. So I'm gonna add in something about walls and fences dividing. Ownerships shall be shown, something like that. Again, unless anyone has any other thoughts on that. All right. So that's the item for plan number four. Number five, site construction plan to be certified by a professional civil engineer and show. Uh, again, I'll put on the limit of work line. Um, I didn't really go through and change.
I did have one question, Matt, before you go into the rest of it. Um. Section C, do we need existing buildings on the site construction plan? Because we have a demo plan that shows the existing building that as it's coming off. I was thinking would make more sense to just have proposed buildings or existing buildings to remain.
On um item on on site construction plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can put uh existing buildings to remain.
I don't think we need to see existing buildings that are being demolished or removed. Yeah.
To remain. Now, see, this is where we get into a little tricky issue here is um a proposed house or building is shown. And that's really for drainage calculations and, you know, just so you can see how how things are gonna gonna be handled. The building shape, size, the driver location, that we have nothing, no say over that at all. So it's on there strictly for calculation and and, you know, just so people can envision what might be there. We we always get into the discussion where we don't like the way the houses and things like that. That's not really, again, that's not up to us. So um, I don't know if we want to put a note on here uh that a schematic layout of proposed buildings should be shown or how we want to handle that. Again, most everyone does that as they're designing it because you you can't design drainage without knowing where the house is going to go and roughly where the water is going to flow. So anyone have any thoughts on that?
It um it sounds like maybe it's not, maybe we don't need to mention it since um sort of industry standard is, like you say, to this to imagine where a house would be so you can, you know, confirm the drainage. So isn't that just sort of consistent? Um, that that's how people would would interpret proposed buildings.
Yeah, but do we do we want to say you shall show on approximation of the size and location of the house or because we could get to a a simple square lot and you don't need to do that. Do we want to have? Do we want to say that you should show a representation of what could be there or not?
I would almost advocate to say no. And and the reason being is that if we have no purview over that and as long as they can validate that the drainage works, you know, putting information that members of the public may object to, but aren't necessarily our purview for a subdivision that to me, that kind of gets a little tricky. You know what I mean? Like, you know, and to Theo's point, it kind of is industry standard to put it on there anyway. So staying silent might might be the 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 path of least resistance. And we really get the information we want by, you know, industry standard practices, but we're not specifically calling out for something that we don't necessarily have a purview over. Such that in in the oddball case where if the developer didn't want to put it on there for whatever reason, but could still validate drainage, we could, you know, proceed.
Okay. Now to play devil's advocate, depending on where the house goes and the a driveway that would go in, it would dictate which side of the house is going to go on where curb cut would be if it's necessarily directly across the street from a a a butter on an existing street. So you know, flipping that the other way, a rough location where the house would be where cars are going to come in and out of that lot would be helpful in our design. Because again, we we might not have any say over the house and location of it, but where the driveway is going to come out and how that drainage is going to work or impact the development is is definitely something that we have say over.
I think the location of the curb cut is something that we would definitely want to find. Okay, the curb cut, no one necessarily dictate the location of the house, right?
Um, yeah, we would want to wherever the curb cut is going to be and where the driveway is going to be, we is going to dictate where the house is going to be. So um, we'll definitely want to see that. So.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest Matt, like some language around like recommended or helpful or or something along those lines to kind of just like suggest or recommend um versus like complete.
Okay, so item G here, the proposed location and dimensions of roadways and if applicable drives and parking areas, curb cuts and driveway aprons. So that basically covers it there. So.
Yep.
So we should be good. All right.
Um, Matt, unrelated, I had another question on something actually on a section B. And this is more just kind of as leveraging your your industry net knowledge being a surveyor. Um, how typically, how easy is it to get to benchmarks being stone bounds or accepted equivalent outside of the construction zone? If that, you know, if the if the subdivision doesn't have the ability to uh control that, I'm assuming that's because you're trying to tie it to other other means that are, you know, accepted such that you have, you know, the survey layout is is, you know, of a higher quality.
So I'm sorry, what's what's the question? Is that standard or is that?
Is that is that something that's typically easily achievable? Or is that something that could that is, and you know, is that an industry standard to be able to achieve something like that?
It is. And um also with with site control, um we've we've had some projects I've worked on where all the traverse has been within the lot and all gets destroyed when they go up the first day and clear the site. Which is really frustrating when you need to go back out there. So I always tell my crews, control has to be substantially far enough away to be non disturbed and benchmarks should be, you know, close to the site but off the site. So uh, the contractor can't say, well, I ripped the house down. You had the the benchmark on the house and I've got nothing. I went off for something else. Something got messed up. Honestly, well, we set our benchmark over here. So you it would be maintained and you chose not to use it. So.
So it's a way of establishing quality control such that if in in the case of contractor error, you're not you're not losing control immediately.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
And if something goes wrong, you want another server to come in or someone else to come in and check it and find out something's wrong here. It's like, okay, here's the benchmark. It's offsite. I bring that elevation back in and check it. If if everything's destroyed and there's a problem, it's easy to to not take responsibility for what you just did. So.
Gotcha. No, that makes a lot more sense now that you explained to me. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So the rest of this section is basically a carryover. Same with the utility plan. I haven't really gone through. So.
Hey, Matt, before we skip to the utility plan, I had one other question as it relates. Um, and maybe this is just me misremembering. Um, on section, the section related to open space. I thought that we did not have the ability to dictate open space or comment on open space as a part of the subdivision. Are we asking for that as for as part of this plan just because um it's assistance assistance with drainage calculations and such? Um, or do we have the ability to comment or write, you know, require open space or comment on, you know, whatever is being proposed as part of the subdivision?
You mean like the item J had the location area and characteristics of any proposed common open space?
Correct.
So if, yeah, if if someone's going to bring do a subdivision and say uh, we're gonna, we're gonna give you this, you know, we're gonna deed this land over the town or to the residents of this as open space. Then we clearly can say, well, that open space you want to give us or give to the to the residents of the subdivision is all wetlands and and not usable. So, you know, we can't just say developer can't come in and say, we're going to give you an acre of of open space and to offset doing something else. And then suddenly of a nice parkland they had, they decided to put a house on that and switch that with open space that was in wetlands. We would clearly want to.
So is that characteristic of that? Is that is that more related to public open space that go that is reverted to the town and or HOA? Or is that just open space in terms of space that's literally open?
Um, I I believe, and this really hasn't come up to tell you the truth, I believe proposed common open space would be common to either the subdivision or the town. So so it's not someone's backyard. Someone's got a backyard and it's not open because there's a ledge there or something. We wouldn't be able to comment on that. But if someone's going to say they're going to dedicate certain land as as open space, we wouldn't want them to dedicate ledge land or, you know, steep slopes that is really not usable.
So does it make sense to insert the word comment or like public common open space or something to that effect? Or you know what I mean? Like it's it's the the crux of it is trying to get to we're trying to be able to have a comment on if they're trying to provide open space that's for public use, right?
Yeah. Um, we could add that. So the location area and characteristics of any proposed.
Public common open space or public basis.
Okay.
Is it common space that's either HOA or public? It's it's designated open space in I in either situation, right?
Yeah, it would be designated as as open space.
So maybe in that case, what you do is you keep the the language as currently constituted, but at the end of, you know, or usable open space, you add the language accessible to either public or um or uh association or something. You know what I mean? Something like that.
Yeah, common ownership.
All right. Yeah. The so how about that that benefits? Um, either the either the subdivision or general public.
That's much better than what I just said.
Okay. All right. We'll see how my how I translate my notes later and how it comes up. So keep watching this. So we'll see what happens. All right, we all set on this item. All right. So again, a former item five, now item six, utility plan. Uh, I just carried that over again. I'm going to put in limit of work line will be on there. This is, these are more stuff, more items that we're going to solicit some more comment from DPW and have them tighten some of this stuff up. Same with grading plan. I haven't really, I just copied this over, kind of reformatted it. So. I don't know if there's much, you know, much we want to discuss about this or I want to handle these. So same with, I I know with the tree planting plan, we may want to have a little input from more input from Concom, because I know they're they're starting to look more at trees and I don't know if we wanted to have this as tree planting, tree planting and tree protection plan perhaps for any existing trees that are going to be remaining that we would want to show them.
I like that.
All right. Because I I know and and this is something where I think and and this is something that basically I I start I started a while ago is having a buffer between the the work being done on on the subject property and the butters so that a developer doesn't instantly clear cut everything and then leave any of the high winds and and potential damage of trees that have no, you know, symbiotic relationship with the tree that used to be with it. They're going to hit, they're going to get buffered with all the Symbiotic relationship with the tree that used to be with it, they're gonna hit, they're gonna get buffered with all the wind and any. Damage to trees are gonna be on someone else's property. Whereas there should be that buffer where the trees, if any storm damage comes, it should be the. The the trees on the lot that's being subdivided get. Get first hit. And protect the abutting trees, so I'm gonna add in something. That's, you know, again, there'll be a buffer between. You know, limit a work line and and neighbors. And do the same thing that after a certain amount of time. Once a neighbor's moved in and they talk to their, you know, once a a new. A new person moves in and they get to know their neighbors and if the wanna agree to take trees down, they can. They don't need to come back to us. But it gives, it gives the neighbors time to settle in and discuss it amongst themselves. So, I know that's. It it isn't a written rule, but it's something, a policy that I have been pushing for years, so. Um. Again, I don't know how anyone feels about that, but. I'm pretty, I'm pretty adamant about that because I came on the board when a big subdivision came in across the street from us and. They basically clear cut the lot and for the next five, eight years, I would see every big storm come and blow down. All the, all my neighbors' trees that had nothing, you know, they just happened to be next to this subdivision where. They had proposed they were gonna have a buffer, but their buffer was a ten foot. Piece of land with no trees on it, so it wasn't wasn't really a buffer to protect the trees, it was just a buffer and namesake, so. Again, a lot of talking there, I don't know if I said much, but uh. No, I'll put it in writing.
Yeah, it's compelling, makes sense.
Alright. Um. And then, uh, so I'm gonna, so we're gonna call this uh, tree planting and protection plan. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
And. I anticipate when we. When we roll this out, we have a a public hearing on this, that some of this stuff is, we're gonna get some more comments on it. I wouldn't be surprised if we get a lot more comments on on this item, so. Um. Erosion and sediment control plan.
Sorry, Matt, before you go on, um. Uh, eight B location caliber and species also refers to eight inches.
Okay, yeah, I will change that. Thank you. So do six inches. And greater. Alright, thank you. Um. Alright, the erosion sediment control, again, I just, this is a copy of what was there. Um, I have not read the Massachusetts erosion and sediment control guidelines for urban and suburban areas. So, I don't even know if that is still applicable. Um. Hopefully, you know, engineering will be able to guide us on something like that. So. Um. And again, everything else is just a carryover here. And then this is, at this point here, this is where my reformatting, I kinda ran out and I need to get working on that some. So. I'm gonna fix that and then we get into details, um. Which. Again. I think the DPW is gonna have more comments on on these, so. That's about it right now, so. I guess if people wanna read through it and see if you have any comments and you can send those to me, I can incorporate them and. Hopefully in a meeting or two, we can get another version out of this and keep plugging away at it. Sound fair?
Yes.
That sounds fair and I appreciate. Uh. All the work, so that's that's really terrific, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Theo, you're on mute.
Yeah. Uh, the best, the best line of the night, um, the item six, uh, items not anticipated by chair. Uh, does anybody have anything?
Um, so I did have one thing that I wanted to talk with the the rest of the board on. Um, as members of the board may or may not have seen the uh, the final guidelines as it related to the MBTA overlay district. Were issued by the state um and are are going around uh at this time. Um, a lot of the information is is materially similar to what it was when the those draft guidelines that came out in January, however, there were some. Some revisions that were made, um specifically as it was the timeline. Uh, now in lieu of end of twenty-three, we have until end of twenty-four in order to um. Get an overlay district in or in compliance with the guidelines in order to secure the funding that is being um offered as a stick for compliance with this. Um, I know, uh, I've reached out to a couple of members of the town council. And as well as uh, Mr. Mayo to see what where, you know, where their heads are on this and the process. Um, a- as the planning board, um, I think it's our duty to. You know, start talking about what this process wants to be in terms of soliciting feedback from the public and or how we want to to proceed. Um, so I wanted that to take this opportunity to start talking, you know. We've been talking about talking about having the conversation for a while, but I think now that we've got the final guy, the guidelines, it makes sense to start. You know, thinking about how we wanna go ahead and and soliciting public and engaging with the public. As it relates to any potential overlay district in order to keep these funding sources uh active. Um. With that being said, you know, kind of the the high level conversations I've I've had with other relevant stakeholders. Um, I think there's a number of different pathways we could we could do. Um, I don't know if other members of the planning board have had conversations with, you know, a amongst ourselves or with town council, I know the United. Uh, a couple of different conversations um about kinda defining next steps, but I think it was something that we might wanna start thinking about. Uh, more in earnest, um, you know, now that we've got the final guidelines and we can start, you know, actually having a real conversation with the facts.
Yeah, um, I I certainly agree and I appreciate um you uh ace of getting the guidelines and circulating them and. Uh. Keeping the issue uh front and center, um. Um. Um, some of the things you mentioned were about um potential ways of uh. Uh, getting additional additional comment, um, forming a working group uh with uh. Other interested parties, interested boards, things like that, you know, that may be a little bit down the line at that.
Yeah, so just to give, you know, get get other members of the the board up to date in terms of um. You know, I reached out to Steve Mayo to figure out where where his thoughts were as regards some of these things. Um, you know, there's a number of relevant stakeholders that, you know, need to be fully engaged in order to to have the, you know, be successful in terms of. Doing this, um, you know, I continue to think that it makes sense for us to basically take the presentation that Mr. Mayo gave to town council. At some point and have it as a public forum uh in order to solicit feedback from the public. One of the things that Mr. Mayo floated as it relates to a concept would be that, you know, create some sort of working group with, you know, members of the planning board and other relevant. Um. Relevant folks in town or, you know, members, you know, Concom Planning Board or whatnot, you know, that might be a mechanism to. Develop at least a a starting point, uh and then use that as a the base of the feedback, but. I I wanted to kinda, I don't know, you know, you know, Matt or Megan, I haven't had as much chance to talk to you guys about this, but. Where your heads are a- as it relates to this, you know, I I think it makes sense for us to reach out and engage with other mem, you know, members of town staff. Uh, you know, Aaron, you know, Concom, some of those other types of relevant stakeholders. You know, that little idea of having a working group, you know, it seems like it's something that could be viable, um but I also wanna. You know, before I continue to have conversations with other other relevant stakeholders, I wanted to make sure we all got on the same page as it relates to. If that's something that would make sense, or, you know, we feel as if that's um. Uh, you know, I I just don't wanna get ahead of my ski tips without having the consensus on this board as well.
Um, yeah, I think we could do that, I know there's, one of the things we need to know is. What are the town's obligations and and expectations, you know, what what what's expected? Uh, for housing production to come out of this, um. So we need to get, just because the state has some guidelines. It doesn't necessarily fit in with the quality and quantity of land that is available in Wakefield. Um, one of the big things is. If they're expecting to have a district with multifamily housing as a right. Uh, and we only have, you know, lots that. Can't support that because of the the size right now. Um, saying that we need to produce two thousand units of housing and have two thousand. Units of multifamily housing available. Uh, might sound great, but in the end, it's unachievable in time. And I I just think we need to, before we scare people too much, saying we need to have two thousand units in town if we met certain criteria. If we don't know what that criteria is. Again, we'll be scaring people saying, oh, this is gonna happen, but i- if you've got a a lot that can't support that. Unless someone buys up multiple lots. And tears down some houses to to do that, it's not gonna happen.
So I'll I can I can address that, Matt, just to clarify, going through the the document. Um, a couple of times and, you know, try try trying to understand what what. My read of the of the document says, my understanding is that the state expects communities to pass. A multifamily district that has a specific level of density that's allowed as of right. Um, specifically fifteen acre, fifteen units per acre. Um, however, the state does not have an explicit number of units that it's mandating as it relates to. You know, thou shalt build, you know, a hundred units or two hundred units, there's nothing to that effect. However, the the, the standard as is as it relates to how large. If the in theory, if you were starting from a blank slate and you had acres. Plus density equals this amount of housing, and so if you look at Wakefield in particular. Um, and that's one way to set a minimum in terms of the size of your district. The other way to set it is, it's um, I think it's like one and a half percent of your developable land. So the with the two thresholds for Wakefield, if you, it's either a thirty-seven acre district based on the percentage of land. Which does not govern, or based on the housing stock and the type of community we're being classified as. The minimum acreage would be approximately a hundred and thirteen acres, um, assuming that we would go with the the lowest. Uh, density allowed by right, which is fifteen units per acre, based on the number of calculations, but. Basically, we would need to develop a approximately a hundred and thirteen acre overlay district. That allows fifteen unit by right in order to be in compliance, you know, with other caveat specifically as it relates to the location. And um continuity of the district, but fundamentally, that's what you would you would need to do. Does that answer your question? I I don't know if that was.
Well, yeah, it it does, it it just doesn't mean that Wakefield has the. The land available in this configuration to make this work, so. Um. You know, you could take all of Greenwood and say, yeah, it's now multifamily housing, but if each lot is only. Fifty by a hundred. That doesn't mean you're gonna put a ten-story unit on a fifty by a hundred foot lot. And and I think that's where people get all worked up about is that. Oh, suddenly, I'm gonna have a huge house next to me with five units in it. And there's no place to park cars or no open, there'd be no open space on that, so. I think that's, that's where we need to do the education here is that. This is what what's expected, in reality, this is probably what you're gonna see in Wakefield, so.
I don't disagree, you know, I think that there's some quality um. Uh, material that has I found on the uh, the MAPC or, yeah, they're a mass housing partner website in terms of precedent. You know, in terms of, you know, what does? Five units an acre look like, what are precedent images for a fifteen unit an acre development? What's a precedent image for a thirty unit per acre development? I I personally think that if I'm looking at at this, just zooming way out. I think that the defining the extent of this is probably gonna be the easy part, it's really gonna be figuring out how do we? How do we provide uh about fifteen unit density? In a way that's consistent with the vision of Wakefield and of, you know, conforms with the law. I don't know if that's necessarily something that is e- that easily definable, because. You know, we're not, I my guess is that we're not gonna take an acreage divided by fifteen. And say that's the minimum lot size, you know, that doesn't seem to make a ton of sense. I I think there's some work that needs to be done on. You know, whoever is gonna be writing this proposed overlay district, I I think you're identifying the exact right. Need in terms of, you know, setting the expectation in order to solicit feedback from the community and explain how that's gonna work, I don't think that's been identified. At this time, how you would conform with that fifteen unit per acre requirement as a right.
Alright, but I think that's gonna be one of the big things we're gonna need to get across to people right from the start, cuz. People are gonna panic right away and say, oh, we're gonna have, we're gonna add. Two thousand units to Wakefield. And they su- assume they're gonna put them in everywhere, so. But that'll be one of our big, big challenges.
I think you're a hundred percent correct, and and I think that it's incumbent, you know, I think. If other members of the board agree, I think what would make a lot of sense is for us to take. You know, most mostly the the presentation that Mr. Mayo presented to town council, make it quote unquote our own. Get a public forum on the books at some point, and then if we, you know, and to solicit that feedback. If people agree that a working session with other relevant stakeholders makes sense, start reaching out to some of the chairs of those bodies. In order to assemble whatever that group wants to look like. And then start to develop, you know, the basis of something that we can use as a starting point to start informing the public what. Different members of the community think could be a viable pathway to conformance. Um, you know, I don't think it's necessary, you know, I I think as I said, I think there's definitely some some parts of this that are very easy to to. Figure out and there are parts of it that I think are gonna be a much more, much more of a challenge, and they're gonna require some coordination between us. Probably Tom Mullen uh from the town council, as well as other, you know, other stakeholders within the community, you know, in terms of what. The community would or would not be able to support.
Uh, Megan, any any responses or or any any items?
No, I haven't had that much of a chance to kind of review that material yet, um and I don't I don't have any additional items right now.
Sure, okay, and and Matt, um, thank you.
Um, I do know what we need to, um, we've got some. Stuff on our website that really need to be cleaned up, Starkav is 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 not active anymore, so that should probably come off. Um. The proposed overlay district at the, around the lake, um. I don't know where we stand with that, I don't know if we wanna keep that on the website, but that may be something we wanna. Make note of that it's dormant or or clean up, but uh. So that'd be one item, uh, I know Theo, you also had sent an email out about uh. Town email addresses. You were inquiring about those.
Yeah, um, it uh, um. Uh, yeah, so when I was in the the planning board email uh account, um, right, uh, it has. But I think you and you and Bill had Wakefield uh addresses, I don't know if there's, if there's, if they're still active or not.
Uh, they were, they were shut down, so.
Okay, alright.
Um, that was something that I had been. That was something that I had been pushing for for actually years about. And Aaron went ahead and took the initiative and then. Found out that she shouldn't have, so they they were kind of like unconcermoniously, you know, shut off, so that's where they stand.
Hey, Matt, to circle back in terms of the the website that you that you. Mentioned, I'm more than happy to raise my hand in terms of reaching out to Jen McDonald. I had a note. You, I I think that. As we get closer to actually starting the process with this overlay district, I had a note that, you know, creating a landing page for that, something I. I think would make a lot of sense. And I'm more than happy if I'm going to be reaching out to her anyway regarding that that effort. To add these other cleanup items to that list to engage with her on. I I agree. Think that the stark ad is needs to come to come off and I I personally, at this point, I would advocate that we we can strongly consider. Removing the Lake Overlay District. It seems as if that has been. Kind of superseded by whatever we whatever. Deliverables may occur after the master plan is issued next year. So in my mind, I think both those items can probably just be removed. I don't know if you disagree.
I think that's fine and we may even want to put a link on to, you know, the master plant process too, just so. For consistency's sake, if someone. Ends up, I mean, you do have a master plan project up the top. But you may want to put it in the. It's kind of weird, these these big. Red squares at the top left, sometimes you don't even see them anymore because. I know I start reading through the text and if I don't see it there, I'm like, what happened to it? So. You may want to put something. Right in the center. Of the highlighting things, so. There are people of a certain age that get sick of looking at pictures and actually want to read texts, so I'm one of them, so.
The the other thing that I, and does it make sense, Matt, and you can correct me if you think that it it does or not. Does it make sense since we're talking about the? Proposed street name change as well as the, you know, we just reviewed the subdivision rules and regs. Does it make sense to take drafts of both of those and add that on to on to here, you know, you know? It's the most obvious place if someone's interested in what we're doing to look. And it's not neither one of those are really being referenced in any meaningful way.
Yeah, I would definitely if for the street naming, if we're going to have a public forum, definitely put it up here so people can look at that. Maybe the A and R that we're pretty much set on, we could post those. And we're getting closer to doing the actual subdivision ones we could, once we get those formed out. I still need someone to go through and do a little formatting. And once we get that formatted properly, maybe put that up too. Just so people can see a working version of what we have and. When it does time, come time for comment, people have a familiarity, they've seen it, so. Fully great.
That's terrific. Thank you for raising this. I had. Three different items. The first thing is. Master plan update. This is pretty exciting. Our next two meetings are going to be in person, which. Are really. Fantastic. The first our first meeting will will be just for our advisory working group. And generally, that is. The purpose of those are to talk about the master plan just generally, but. Focus on the survey questions and help prep for the next. Public forum. The third public forum is going to be October nineteenth. In person at the Galvin Middle School Auditorium from. Six thirty to eight thirty P M. The the topics are going to be transportation and circulation. Mobility. Options and getting around and. So that's the first topic. The second topic is sustainability and climate resilience, adapting to environmental changes. So last time we had housing and I think cultural resources and this time we've got. Transportation and sustainability, so really. Worthwhile topics and. Yeah, we're we're back. Back to doing all we can to. Jennifer attendants, so I'll circulate some more materials to all of y'all. That's that's big doings. We like that. Next up is Wakefield one O one. This is an event for new residents to meet. Various departments and community groups hosted by BB Library. It's a casual and open house and. We've got a table and Jennifer McDonald will take care of all the organizing. This is going to be the day after the. The public forum, it's going to be Thursday, October twentieth. It's from seven, from six to seven thirty P M. In the Americal Center. So this is a great option. To. Continue to wave the the flag for the master plan, obviously, and certainly anything that we want to do. Leading up to public meeting or or town town meeting rather. And MBTA communities or the other things we're. Yeah, if you'd like to, it'd be great to participate, you know. We could only have two. From a current perspective, so just, you know, think think about your schedules and let me know and. We can talk about it again at the next meeting when when Bill's back. Just to solicit. The most immediate item, my third item is from Rebecca Davis at the Conservation Commission. They are beginning the process of rewriting and updating the open space and recreation plan. And they are forming an open space committee of related boards and representatives. And they ask for a planning board member to volunteer. It's going to be at most five meetings over ten months, so a meeting every other month. And to 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 give advice. They would like to formally name. Their this open. This open space committee at their meeting on Thursday, so. Would love to get a volunteer tonight to let them. He's not here, but I'm very happy to nominate Bill Spaulding. No, I'm just kidding. But does anybody have any interest?
I I need to. Basically take myself out of the running because I. Deal with the.
Okay.
With the Conservation Commission on. Other issues not related to planning board stuff, so I don't think it would be appropriate for me to. To be on that.
Okay, all right.
Theo, did I miss it? But did you give like details? Do they have a specific time? Or date of day of the week that they're looking to schedule or is it more based off of? The group and then they'll decide what is best to accommodate for the participants.
They. They had it, they had a grid, but I don't think it was is particularly detailed, right? You know, it had like all this, all the the elements of. To follow and then so they designated the the five months, but not the not the days. So. But. Yeah, I I would, I would expect them to be. As friendly as possible.
Now, it's kind of hard to commit when when you don't know, at least. If we knew it was going to be, people knew it was going to be a certain day every week or every month. That would be fine, but you could theoretically sign up for. First for this and find out it's every Wednesday and you.
Right.
Wednesdays are taken, so.
I can follow up with Rebecca and. Sort of. Megan be a broker between the the two of you or. And we we can see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I can. I can, if we can get the a little bit more detailed information, then I'm sure Bill and I can look at the options and see what might work for. Either of us, right? If the options work and then we can determine who might be the best representative from that.
Yeah. And I I really. Was. Not not really intending now to nominate Bill, but. Or or anyone directly.
I I kind of like it. We'll see, we'll see what happens. But yeah, if you can get some further information, that would be great.
Okay. I will do that and I will follow up separately with you. The. This is has been a really worthwhile meeting tonight, so I really appreciate everyone's participation. The. We we got a, we got a couple of other requests for comment from the zoning board. I don't know if anybody has any comments about. Eighty. Twenty Dexter's Lane. Sixteen Overlake Road. Or one twenty three Pleasant Street. These are all. Construction of additions. I don't have any and. Kind of what's the other sort of noteworthy thing is that. The zoning board has approved the special permit to rebuild the Baptist Church. That's that's pretty terrific. In this. Restoration tour. Other than that, if no one's got anything else, again, thank you all very much and can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I will, I will second.
All right. All in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And myself, thank you. All right. All right. Well, we'll we'll be talking certainly and thanks again, everybody.
Thanks, Theo. Have a great night, everyone.
Hey, guys.
All right, good night.
Thanks, Matt.